We'll get the meeting underway here. So all times on this agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until that matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board Meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS 2410153B2. I'll call this meeting to order. JR, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commission may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Kathy?
No report, thank you.
Okay, Kathy?
No report.
Okay, no report. JR?
I did a Zoom meeting with Nevada Works the other day. They had quite a bit of interesting stuff going on, but most of it was for like Vegas and Reno. Didn't really apply to small communities. But they did have a couple of interesting points. One was getting community involvement to find out what's going on in the community. And I know we've got a newsletter, but it'd be nice, like, put another little section in there that like the businesses could apply, you know, they need help or whatever. And that would let the public know that they're looking for people to work for them. Seemed like an idea to me.
Okay, thank you, JR. Okay. We'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Good morning, Commissioner. I have a little bit of a lengthy update today, so I apologize before I even get started. The, uh, we do have a Dollar General store coming to town. It's gonna be between the liquor store and Midway. They've gone, they're going through the permit process right now with the building department. I just thought that that would be important to pass along to the commission. As things like that show up in town, I will give you guys the heads up once the, it becomes public knowledge. And then, uh, we met with the Forest Service yesterday on the land transfer. And once we make our formal request, we only have 60 days to get all that land transferred over. So there's some property boundary line adjustments that need to be done and some other things that we're working through. That's gonna take a little bit of time, and we'll, we'll keep you guys updated on all the stuff that's to come. This is all down in Austin for, and this was part of the lands bill. They gave us more than we expected, which was our original ask. So with that, some of these, uh, boundary lines don't quite match up to what we have down there, which, which we know from the county of Austin. So, um, we won't make our formal request for a little while until we have some of that stuff kind of in order to make everybody's life a little better. The Austin Health Clinic, I just want, and Nevada Health Centers, I just want the commission and the community to know that I did speak with Nevada Health Centers. They have been called, um, by a member of... I'm trying to think of the organization. Anyway, they, they were called and told that Lander County wanted to get rid of Nevada Health Centers and take over a clinic down there. So I just want to clarify, we don't wanna do anything other than strengthen that relationship and continuing move forward down there in Austin. That conversation came up from my previous, uh, update to the commission when, um, I told you that we were trying to combine our funds for the youth center, the clinic, and the, uh, um... What's the other one? The library, thank you. And the library down there and kind of leverage them funds for one building and put everybody in one spot. So I think that's where that came from, and I would just like to clarify, we aren't going anywhere with them. We're just trying to strengthen that relationship. If anything, we try to leverage it to, to make it better. So, um, and then myself and staff, we've been going through a lot of training. Um, I think that we'll be sending out an email to all the commissioners with this list of training and everything that we went through. Um, we did do some leadership training this last week. We were gone for a couple of days, and it was really good. I'll let HR further that in an email. And then we went to the Robertson Mine Tour and looked at the site that they're gonna be moving it to. It's a, it's a pretty impressive old mine site. There's a lot of old buildings, a lot of old diggings, considerable amount of, of water being moved even currently. When you look at the pit that they're in right now, it is impressive. So if anybody has any questions on that, we'd be happy, myself and, and Commissioner Antra went on that tour, so we'd be happy to answer any, if there are specific questions that we can answer that came out of that tour. If you do get a chance, maybe stop by the Civic Center and go look at the remodel that was done in there. I think that our engineer, Aaron Martinez, and Braemar Construction deserve a huge pat on the back. Not only did they get it done, they got it done within the timeframe, and, uh, and it's awesome. So truly beautiful, worth a stop to see, um, the improvements because I think the community's really gonna enjoy that. On the next agenda, I would like to put the negotiations for the ambulance, the Battle Mountain ambulance. I think we've hit a point where we're, we're kind of in a rock and a hard spot between us and the hospital and what I feel is negotiable and what they feel is negotiable, that I think that it might be the best time to put it in front of the commission and maybe the hospital board and make sure that myself and Jason's feelings aren't the only two that are reflected on these negotiations, that we do, um, have transparent negotiations for the public to, to see and, and understand why we've come to them, to them hard spots. So, um, and then the cricket abatement. I know the crickets are getting thick. We have a whole bunch of bait. Commissioner Thomas is working on that, as, as he was last year. But if there are members of the public that have any issues or they're coming in on, on homes or anything, please let us know so we can try to, um, head that off at the pass. Same thing with, uh, with fogging for mosquitoes. We're doing a lot of that in-house. So if there's an area where it's getting really thick, please notify us, and we will try to make arrangements, touch bases with beekeepers and anybody else in the area that may have concerns, so we can clarify the products we're using and, uh, and the safety of them. They are neighborhood-friendly, pet-friendly. They don't kill gnats so well, but they do really well on mosquitoes. We will be in Austin and Kingston this Sunday fogging, so, um, I believe Commissioner Waits is gonna be posting some flyers down there on the, at the mailboxes and at the post office for us. And if anybody has any concerns, please reach out. That's the end of what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Burton. Uh, we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only. Is there a public comment?
I do, as far as the Civic Center. They had an open house last night. Rita, the ladies have worked their tails off. The library was open, stayed open. The chamber stayed open. There was a ton of food and only a handful of people, which made me sad, but that, they did a beautiful job in there. And Rita cleaning up everything, putting everything away. I wish we would've had more public in there because it wa, it is absolutely beautiful, and it's something to be proud of. So I just wanted to make sure that we recognized, um, those ladies as well.
Well, thank you. Uh, any more public comment? Okay, we'll move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, approval of May 25th, 2023 Agenda Notice. Two, approval of March 23rd, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Three, approval of April 13th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Four, approval of April 27th, 23 Meeting Minutes. Five, approval of May 10th, 2023 Special Agenda Meeting Minutes. And six, approval of payroll change requests.
I would like to have number six polled, please.
Okay, so we'll pull six.
Do we have any changes on, um, the agenda?
No, no, no changes.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We approve number one, number two, and number three. I did not receive minutes for the 27th of April or the 10th of May.
Okay.
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second to approve one, two, and three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and, uh, so, six?
Six, alright. So I had, um, a few comments on this 'cause I've received a few calls and wanted to make some, put some clarity out there. For one, um, we as a commission do not have a say on how much somebody is paid through an office of an elected official. So that elected official has the ability to pay employees what they feel is right, and we cannot approve or disapprove that, um, that funding itself. If we have an issue when it comes up to budget, that's where that issue is brought up. Secondly, I've had calls from people wanting to, um, say their appreciation of Liz and how much work that she's done and is basically doing the job of three people. And she is putting in approximately 16 hours a day, five days a week. And she's gone above and beyond, um, for that office, and I wanna make sure that people know that she is appreciative. We are appreciative of that. And I've also had conversations with law enforcement wanting to express their appreciation for what she is doing. And I think that she deserves that recognition. And, um, people in the public have no idea until they are a victim of what goes on because it's easy to look at them out and say, "This person's overpaid." But they have no idea until they're actually a victim, and they need that system and that person in there doing that. So I just wanna make sure that she is recognized for all of her, um, service that she has been doing for this office. So I'm gonna, that's...
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Yeah? Alright, so, um, any more on it? If not, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the payroll change request by number six.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. We'll move into item one. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the payment of bills. We need to pull check 219703. Are there any other checks that need to be pulled?
I make a motion we approve the balance.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I make a motion we approve check number 219703.
I'll second.
And we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I abstain from it. It's made to my employer. We'll move into item two. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the Lander County Final Budget for fiscal year 23, 24, and the submission to the Department of Taxation. Lincoln?
Good morning. Lincoln Sullivan for the record. Um, this is just the final to be sent with all the changes that were made at the last meeting.
Are there any questions? Questions from the public? I will hear a motion if there's any questions.
I'll make a motion that we approve the county final budget for fiscal year 2023 and 2024 and the submission of the Department of Taxation.
Okay, we have a motion?
A second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll move to item three. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the EOP Emergency Operations Plan for LEPSE, which is local emergency planning commission and authorized and shared to sign.
Good morning.
Morning, Michelle.
So for the record, my name is Michelle Young. I am the current chairperson for LEPSE. So in, you guys are, most of you are aware that I've been working on updating the Lander County Emergency Operations Plan through LEPSE. I came across a section near the back of it that was a Lander County Emergency Operations Plan, I think is the header you guys have in the packet I brought you. And on the, on the first page of that was a document, I think, that says resolution that requires the commissioners to look over that plan, agree with it, and then sign that resolution. To my knowledge, it's never been approved, that section, and signed by the commissioners because that page was blank in the book that I have. So that's why I'm here, is hopefully you guys have had a chance to look over that. If it is correct, then we can move forward with signing that. If it's not, then we need to make arrangements to fix whatever there might be issues with that, of which I have no knowledge of any of that.
You know, I'm, I'm pretty sure, Michelle, that we did, we did one a while ago, but I don't remember how long ago. So if it's not in the file, we need to do it anyway. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Well, to my knowledge, um, the Lander County Emergency Operations Plan book that I have, I have the only copy that is as updated as it can be. If any of you have copies of that, like the one Robert has, hasn't been updated since like 2011. The one I have, they had updated it to like 2017 or something. And in that particular book, that page is not signed. So I don't know, I don't know how long it's been.
2007, 2010, and that, that, that term, I remember doing, 'cause I sat on the LEPSE Board as a commissioner, and I remember signing it. So what happened after that point, I'm not sure.
Yeah, well, anyway, we, we need to make it right, so thank you. But I do have some questions. Thank you. And the one, okay, let me see. The part where you noted that you had updated... Let me see, that said A... Here it is.
What page is it?
A3-1, A4-2, and AS. I'm on page number three. Okay, so those are the ones I'm gonna go to. So on the very first one, which will say introduction on page number one. The top of it starts with authority. Okay. I think we should change the name of the Nevada Highway Patrol. As long as we're updating and they've changed their name to Nevada State, I think we might as well have it right, too.
So we're changing Nevada Highway Patrol to Nevada State Highway Patrol?
Yes, no, it's Nevada State Patrol.
Robert Quick for the Sheriff's Office. They're now referring to themselves as Department of Public Safety Nevada State Police.
Can you go, kinda borrow your pen? Can you go back and tell me what page you're on? 'Cause I also have the only digital copy of this.
Page one.
Page one, introduction, it says.
The evacuation, evacuation plan, page one.
Behind the resolution and...
Oh, I got you.
Yeah, there it is. So that was one. My other one is... A31, the one you noted.
What page number?
And you're, you're noting that you're updating these, so I don't know, are you with me yet, Michelle? You still looking?
Well, the page numbers on the bottom of these are a mess.
I'll wait.
Um, can you give me an idea what the page looks like?
The page numbers aren't on, you can't read it.
The top says Appendix 3, evacuation resources.
Okay.
Got that?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm assuming you updated the, the buses and things like that, 'cause you know, you noted here they were updated. So the question I have is, um, we have Lander County EMS, and I think that's good, but I'm wondering if we should break that down to Battle Mountain and Austin. What do you think, Hurry?
Oh, I think that that encompasses Lander County. I don't know. I, I guess I'd have to lean on, under Sheriff Quick's opinion of that.
'Cause if you're looking at resources and people looking up, and if we're just dealing with, with Austin, then, you know, it just seems as if we had an immediate phone for that. But that's up to you guys on the, on that.
I'm trying to think through the rest of that book and not just this section.
But since we do have a, you know, full-time coordinator down there, I thought you might like to... Anyway, you can talk to Burton and see what she'd like to do. But the correction I have is, um, the different flight services, Access Air, Care Flight, how about Air Med?
So off the top of my head, and I apologize for this, if, in this table, on the digital copy that I have, if I can go in and add to that, I'm happy to do that. But one of the biggest issues we're having with this book so far is when they have a table like this, how, whatever the formatting is, I can't go in and add columns to that. That's why at some point, we're gonna ask for somebody to come in and fix this. So if there's a blank line, like under Lander County EMS, I can probably type into that line, but I don't know if, where Access Air and those are in there, if I can add a line and type into that also. I may be able to type into...
Well, it's kind of a big one. I think you can get two in there. You could probably get Austin EMS in the right underneath it. You could get Air Med before you start with Access Air, hopefully.
Robert Quick for the Sheriff's Office. So, um, a while back, I mentioned that this manual is, was so very old, and the original company that did this did not provide it in an editable format. So we had actually converted this to an ed, to, as much as we could, to an editable format for them to do the updates, but it absolutely is a very difficult manual at this point to update. And that's why I had mentioned, um, that FEMA had updated some of the requirements and so forth, that we would end up coming back to the commission and working with Burt for potential funding once we find a company to actually redo the entire manual and provide it in an editable format for the future. We have been working on that. However, it's proven extremely difficult to find a company that wants to do it for somebody that's this small.
Well, as far as our main manual, though, and, and Michelle, I mean, I don't care, write it in. But, you know, I mean, well, we will have it. That's, that's all. I mean, and that's, that's why you brought it to us for updates, to redo, right?
I did.
Okay. So tho, those are my two on that one. The other one I have is, um, page ASI. It's just a couple pages down. And it starts out with Austin Clinic, and then it says assisted living. By looking at that...
Okay, got it?
Yeah, I think that's it. It would make me think that we, if, if we had to do a full evacuation, we would go to the clinic and expect to get people out of there. And it's not anything to do with assisted living, so let's just blank that out. It's a clinic. And then along with that, you're naming all of the schools. So I think we certainly need to add our private school, which is the High Desert Educational Association.
Do they have the preschool in there? Do they have the preschool listed in there? The preschool?
Yes.
Okay. And then...
The preschool is here. Christ Eastern.
And Christ Lutheran is in there as well.
Yes, that one's in there. It's just a new one.
Do you know who I would get ahold of at the High Desert Educational Association? Because there's probably other sections in the EOP manual where there's schools that I would need to go in and know the square footage of the school, how many kids they have, number of bathrooms, blah, 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 blah.
Kim Buffington.
Kim Buffington, okay.
Yeah, that was the other thing. When you put down the Austin school, I think it, it had us with 38 high school students and 22...
That was a challenge.
Children.
Getting ahold of all the schools and people and getting all that right information, boy, had it. I just wanna clarify that, the, the conversation that Robert just told you guys, the information in the EOP manual that I have is accurate, okay? The formatting is a problem. But I have, I have went through and updated in the last two years, that entire manual. Um, I need to get Robert a flash drive with the section that I finished since the last time I gave him one. And then, we would be able to make that available to anybody that wants it in a digital format. So, it just, when you, when you look at this, it's nice and clean and pretty. When I go in to change it, it messes up the tables and the lines, and it's not nice and clean and pretty. But I'm happy to write in the information if I can't do it unless Robert can help me recreate the entire page. But I'll clean it up the best I can.
Well, I just think you should have it, and then we'll go from there.
I'll do my best.
And it's, and so we know that she has ca- put countless hours into this, and it's extremely frustrating, and it's hard to do. This has been quite a struggle for her as a volunteer that does this, so I just want to make sure that, you know. I know that what you've done, and I do appreciate you because I know this, this has been very difficult for you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any more questions? Is there questions from the public?
No, I would just like to second what Ms. Antra said. There's been a tremendous amount of work that's went into it. This hasn't been updated for a reason because of the nightmares that come with it. And all the people you have to contact and information you have to track down and beat on doors to get, so, Michelle, it's truly appreciated by, by us. It's, it's a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. So, uh, we'll hear, I'll hear a motion. The, we have a resolution. Do we need to read that into the record? With the motion? Okay. Um, I don't mind reading the resolution. I'll read the resolution, then if somebody can make a motion. Resolution, whereas, we need to make corrections in that first paragraph is lauder, it should be lander. Whereas, Lander County Emergency Management Office participated in a statewide evacuation, mass care, and sheltering initiative, and the efforts of this initiative have resulted in the county's all hazardous evacuation plan. And, whereas, we need to make the correction from lauder to lander. Lander County conducted a capabilities gap analysis and integrated local public safety input as part of this process to consider strategic, uh, strategies for evacuating and sheltering the population against the natural technological and cause risk to within the county is vulnerable. And, whereas, recent events have shown that the county remain ever vil- uh, vil- diligent to eliminate or reduce the risk of human life, property, the environment posed by hazards, and, whereas, the evacuation plan's purpose is to provide for the orderly and coordinated evacuation of all and/or part of the population of Lander County. If it is determined that such action is the most effective method for protecting, uh, the population from the effects of an emergency situation, and, whereas, the evacuation plan is a living document, therefore be it resolved, the Lander County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of the resident, should be residents of Lander County, adopt the Lander County evacuation plan, and further direct the county manager, um, Ca- Lander County Emergency Manager act in informing the public and community of the evacuation and mass care strategies recommended by the plan, as well as periodically updating the plan to ensure that it remains timely and relevant, adopted. This, what's today's date?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth of May?
Uh, don't we need a resolution number to read into this motion?
There's some, just, yeah, there's some typographical stuff in there, too. Just, I think I pointed out the major part.
You do need to get a resolution number from the clerk's office.
So, can the motion have with, not only with the corrections with it, and attaching a resolution number to it? Approve it with that? All right, so then I'll make the motion that we approve, uh, the EOP, um, Emergency Operation Plan for LPSY, Local Emergency Planning Commission, and, uh, but with the assigning of the resolution number and the corrections.
Okay.
And authorize the chair to sign.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
And the resolution number, does it go up at the top next to resolution, or about where you want it?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so we'll move into item four. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove resolution number twenty-two-three dash oh-six for the Board of Lander County Commissioners opposing Assembly Bill three-five-five. So, this is, uh, basically the legislation that's looking at lo- uh, raising the age limit to twenty-one. This is what this is all about. Anybody want to speak on it?
So, this has passed the Senate?
Uh, Robert Quick for the Sheriff's Office, just so you know, the, the governor vetoed this.
Vetoed it?
Uh, so it's currently been vetoed, uh, and returned back to the House and the Senate, and they have, I believe, eight, twelve days left in session. So, just for your knowledge.
So, that's a-
It passed the Senate, but it went back to the Senate?
No.
It passed the Senate and the House, went to the governor's office, and he vetoed it.
And now it's back in.
And so it went back to the legislature.
So, now we're back to both of them?
For override.
For the two-thirds, right?
Correct.
And I believe they're one member short of being able to do that, so.
Yeah, I think, based on the way the vote was, um, originally, I think it, they have the votes to pass in the Assembly, but they don't have enough in the Senate. If the votes numbers stay.
Thank you.
So, um, are there any other questions? Questions from the public? I'll hear a motion. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number two-zero-two-three dash oh-six for the Board of Lander County Commissioners opposing Assembly Bill three-five-five. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Actually, we need to read the resolution into the record. Anybody want to read it? I will read it. A resolution of the Lander County Board of Commissioners opposing Assembly Bill three-five-five, number two-zero-two-three dash oh-six, whereas the Board of Lander County Commissioners exercises general responsibility for the welfare of the citizenry. Whereas, Lander County recognizes the Second Amendment of the Constitution of the United States of America, and the right to keep and bear arms. Whereas, both Nevada's and Lander County's economy benefit immensely from outdoor-related industries such as hunting and shootings. Whereas, certain excise taxes collected on the purchase of firearms and ammunition contribute greatly to the conservation of our state's wildlife and wildlife management. Whereas, the possession and handling of firearms in a safe and legal manner is supported by a majority of Nevadans. Whereas, firearm safety is of paramount importance for those who are involved with outdoor shooting, sports, and hunting. Whereas, many of our younger Nevadans under the age of twenty-one are positively exposed to safe and proper handling of firearms, practice sound firearm safety, and participate routinely, routinely in firearm-related activities such as shooting sports and/or hunting. Whereas, legislation proposed by AB three-five-five is, if passed, would significantly negate the resources spent by local and state governing entities for young, for youth shooting sports programs and recreational shooting facilities. Whereas, legislation proposed by AB three-five-five, if passed, will do little to stop certain persons under the age of twenty-one from possessing semi-automatic firearms and simply punish law-abiding citizens. Whereas, legislation of this nature does nothing to address the core issues of illegal possession of firearms and use of firearms in violent crimes. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Lander County comm- that Lander County opposes Assembly Bill three-five-five and the unrealistic proposed legislation, legislative language that would do absolutely nothing to limit violent crime and only punish law-abiding assist- citizens, passed and adopted this, what's the day again?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth of May. So, that's it. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Thanks, guys. So, we'll move into item five. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the bill and resolution number two-zero-two-three dash oh-seven in support of Elko County's Common Sense Lands Act. So, are there any questions on this? None? I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
That we approve the bill and resolution number two-zero-two-three dash oh-seven in support of Elko County, County's Common Sense Land Act.
Okay. You want to read the resolution? Into the record?
I will, if you'd like me to. Jay, are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm fine. I just had to pull it up. That was a couple seconds. A resolution of Lander County Board of Commissioners to support the Elko County's Commission Sense, Common Sense Land Act, number two-zero-two-three dash oh-seven. Whereas, the twelve western states upon admission to the Union were deni- denied equal footing to the original states because of the federal government became possession of the public, their public lands. Thomas is, Thomas Jefferson wrote in seventeen eighty-four that when new states were admitted to the Union, it would be on an equal footing with the said original states. And the doctrine was followed bu- within, with the thirty-eight states east of the Colorado. And, whereas, the twelve western states were denied equal sovereignty required for a republic as established in the United States to work properly, the equal sovereignty principle was cited by the US Supreme Court as re- recently as twenty thirteen in Shelby County versus Holder. And recognizes that for a state is, uh, re- republic, it to function properly, each member and the repu- public must be of equal sovereign power when state is denied its land i- is inferior polit- politically and economically to both the federal government and the states that were given their land. And, whereas, the twelve western states were denied the compact entered into the into when they became state. The compact theory maintains the contract was entered in between the new, new states and the federal government in which the states give up all claim to their land within the borders, and the federal government agreed promptly and completely dispose of land by sale or grant. And, whereas, in twenty fifteen, a dabbler law group analyst determined that the equal footing doctrine, equal sovereignty principle, and the compact theory were ammunition enough to preserve litigation in the effort to gain ownership, ownership of the public land. And, whereas, the federal government now controls nearly ninety percent of Nevada's lands more than any other state. And, whereas, the
Posity?
Posity of pu- of private land in Nevada severely constrains the size and diversity of its county. Since some federal lands are removed from the tax rolls, and, whereas, the net Nevada Land Management Task Force, consisting of one county commissioner from each county, determined in, anonymously in twenty fifteen that a significant new revenue could be realized if the public lands were managed by local government. And, whereas, the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act allowed allies of public lands in Clark County generating more, generating more than three billion in revenue. Well, no such mechanism exists in the other sixteen, in the sixteen other co- Nevada communities. Now, therefore, be resolved, Lander County supports the Elko Common Sense Lands Act, ECCS-L-A, enables individual counties to identify land they need and require as the Secretary of Interior to transfer title to counties without consideration. And, be it further resolved, Lander County recognition that the ECCS-L-A only makes eligible for land transfer, lands administered by the Bureau of Land Management. And counties are authorized to sell only those lands identified as suitable for sale through construct, consultation with the Wildlife Board, Board of County Commissioners, and the owners of any valid existing rights or uses. That passed on and adopted this twenty-fifth day of May twenty-twenty-three.
Okay.
Um, I will second the motion with the notation to correct the spelling.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Perfect.
Would, would the Commission be opposed to me, uh, giving a letter of support to Elko County?
No, I'd like for you to do that.
Okay.
Rest of you, you'd like that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Number six, Commissioners, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove on whether a majority of the members of the Lander County Board of County Commissioners deem it to be in the best interest of Lander County and the Lander County Economic Development Authority Board, LIDA, that said district be merged, consolidated, or dissolved, and if a majority of Lander County Commissioners agree to then formally request of the Board of Trustees of Lander County Economic Development Authority Board, a resolution agreeing to the merger, consolidation, or dissolution. Uh, Mr. Chop called me last night and asked to pull this, because he had some questions. I didn't necessarily want to pull it because I felt that we had already discussed it somewhat, LIDA had already agreed to it, but I wasn't going to make that decision as a single Commissioner, so I'm going to put it to you guys. If you'd like to do business, because we are informed we could do business, but if the majority would like to see us pull it and bring it to a future, or a future agenda, we could do that as well.
So, my question is, if the Leaderboard themselves were, was outvoted and said it was fine, and then it came to us and we voted, why would you not do that?
So, this, this item is just for you guys to give our department direction to move forward with the process. That's all this item is.
Yeah, that's because I thought we'd already decided just that we wanted to do that.
Yes.
I would just ask by a-
So, this is just to start it so that you give us formal direction to move forward with the process, and then we can start the process like we did the last one.
Okay.
That's all this item is.
And Mike wanted it deferred because we had more information?
He had, he had concerns. Yeah, he had concerns, so I don't know if he shared that concern with our county manager, um.
I think we have somebody from Austin on that wanted to address it, though.
Austin, are you there?
Yes, there's nobody here.
Good of you. So, I, I did speak with Commissioner Chop last night. He called me and, uh, and asked the same as, and I, uh, you know, obviously, he'd spoke to, to Brian as the, as a chair. And, uh, hit, some of his concerns were, how are we going to continue moving forward? And, and my question was the same one that, that I'd asked when we had our, we did our SWOT analysis, which is our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities, and the threats, um, of possibly, you know, when we go through each of them, and we itemize them out of getting rid of the, the Leaderboard. And the, the question that I asked is, what aren't we doing? What, what would the county not be doing if we, if we were to abolish this board? What, what isn't going to be done? Um, right now, we have weekly meetings in our building department that anybody can come in and get direction and, and see what's happening and keep the ball moving, um, as opposed to monthly. And, uh, and when I explained all these things to, uh, to Commissioner Chop, he, he understood that, and he, and he appreciated the explanation. He did say that he had, he had questions. He wanted to, his opinion to be reflected on the record to the public. Um, because he thinks that the public needs to hear exactly what I'm telling you right now, is that, you know, when we have a county employee that responds to a volunteer board that doesn't have authority over them, if they make a bad decision, who holds them accountable? Um, whereas, if they're working in the building department there, and they're told to, to get something done or not, to do something because of the responsibilities they're put on, then they can be held accountable by whoever is above them. But, um, an example that I used last night is, we were told to put in for some grants. And when we came and looked through the grant application, I said, we don't have the staffing to comply with these grants. And the Chair of the Leaderboard at that time had said, well, we want to put in for the grants. I said, well, that's fine, but there's no staffing to manage these. Um, and so it starts causing some, some rubs between volunteers and staff that have to, have to answer to what is and isn't being done. Um, and it goes back to the, the same question is, what won't be done? What will be missing? In our, in our analysis, there's nothing that will be missing, and a matter of fact, it almost strengthens because you get weekly meetings to get in touch with these people that have questions, um, to come in and, and business opportunities. Um, and you're, and they're right there at the building departments where they can get the permits, where they can get all the answers to what they're looking for.
I have a question on just, I don't know how, I mean, if it ties in, but with Dollar General, did they go through our Leaderboard, or did they go through our Planning Commission?
So, that, that's a-
Or our Planning Board?
That is another, that's another good one. When we spoke to Dollar General, um, they initially had started there at the reaching out, asking, hey, who do I talk to? Where do I go? And this had went on for a couple months before they actually finally got in contact with the right people and got to the building department to get the proper avenues to pull permits, to apply, to get in, into the county. Um, so I do think that in certain cases, Dollar General is a prime example. Um, some of these businesses just move on when they can't get the answers they're looking for.
Who are they talking to? Why wouldn't they come to the county? All new businesses go to the county.
That, that's a quality that's, yeah, it sounds, that sounds, that sounds good, but I think when they're told by members of a, of a board, that, yeah, we'll have this on the next agenda, or we got to review this. Um, they believe, a lot of these businesses believe that that's how it happens, and, and Commissioner Antra might be better to speak to some of this, but, um, not knowing, they reach out to these development boards saying, hey, we would like to come to your community, and if they aren't getting a timely response, they move on.
Oh, I, I never heard that, anything like that before. Who is our liaison for Goad, then?
Is it Sheldon for the, in it for the NNRDA, is it? He's, he's the one that-
Yeah, Sheldon's our-
And so, yeah, and that has, uh, most people go through Sheldon anyway, regardless, and there has been that's who that we are utilizing, um, for that stuff. And when I asked Sheldon, what is this, are we doing this twice? Before they vote, the board voted, um, and mind you, I'm not a voting member on the board, I'm just there to break a tie. And so, they had their conversation, and so before I asked Sheldon, are we double doing it here, or, you know, we're just kind of chasing our tail? And he says, NNRDA basically is doing and is getting paid to do this. And, um, so it's sufficient for NNRDA because then they directly contact somebody within the county when they're do- when, when there is somebody. And I know that because from the, the information that Sheldon sends out to us, we see all of the people that are, have contacted him and are interested in different things. And then, uh, so I think that, not that, uh, uh, LIDA was not appreciated, because I don't want to say that, but the Leaderboard themselves were, uh, voted to dissolve, and if that was, then that was their choice. So, that's where it came back to us to vote what we wanted to do. So, and that was, um, Sheldon was in favor of that.
And so, to, to kind of address that, that question of where people go, it's, it's very similar to NNRDA. A lot of these people go see Sheldon Mudd and say, hey, we would like to do this, and maybe we're thinking about Lander County, but they don't go to Lander County first, um, which is, which is interesting. Um, but, but it is an example of how some of the outreach works when they-
I think it's the advertising, because when NNRA does the advertising and people are looking at that, then they will go to NNRDA. But, any business that, and I've worked with businesses for a number of years, and I can't imagine anybody, when you want to go into that county, you go directly to that county. And I've never heard of going to a board, especially a volunteer board, whether it's economic development or not, that's to entice people, but that's not the authority. So, they go to the county. So, if there was a mix-up, that's got to be very unfortunate, but I, I can't imagine that particular thing happening very often, that-
I, I don't think that a lot of people, when they go to these boards, know which boards are volunteer and which boards are elected. Um, there's even been confusion sitting here at times, which boards are elected and which are, uh, volunteers. So, um, when these businesses come to the, come to town, I don't think that they're, they're just looking for anybody that will give them the next step, and that oftentimes wasn't happening.
What I'm saying is, especially somebody like that, they, this isn't their first rodeo, and they always end up going to a county to get the information. So, I mean, they have to be licensed there, they have to be approved there. I mean, I, I just, anyway. Close my mind.
All right. So, is there any other questions, discussion? If not, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that, um, we approve, uh, I don't even know how to make that a motion. That we move forward with the District Attorney's Office, um-
For dissolution of the board?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Uh, we'll move into item seven. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the reappointment of one individual to serve on the Lander County Convention and Tourism Authority Board, which she currently sits, and term expires June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. New terms are from July first, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, and our applicant is Michelle Lanham.
I will make a motion that we reappoint Michelle Lanham to the Lander County Convention and Tourism Authority Board. She represents the, uh, open position for Southern Lander County as a motel hotel.
I have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Hang on one second.
Yep.
As if I sit on that board and I am a voting member, am I okay to vote, or do I have to abstain?
No, you can vote.
All right. So, aye, too, as well.
Okay. Perfect. We'll move into item eight. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the amendment to the interlocal contract between the State of Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health, DPBH, Community Health Service Programs, and Lander County.
Okay, so this agreement has already previously been approved. This is a required agreement per NRS for the state, so we have to do it. The only thing that they are asking for is, they are asking, because it's supposed to term on June of twenty-twenty-three, they're asking to extend it for two years, and if you go to the pages and they're actually lowering the amounts, I believe, on item seven, it'll give you a breakdown.
Page, page.
Page two of nine.
So, I have, I have some questions on this. Okay, so, so, first question is, this person that we have as the liaison from the state in our county for health, certain health issues, is it required by NRS, is, or do, can we have a say whether we want that state person in our county?
No, this, this is a requirement. We have to do this.
Okay.
But if you look on page nine, they did change that base amount, and we do have the gal from Community Health, Estacey here, um, if she can help assist. But they did change that block where it says Community Health Nurse Two, Eight Hours Per Month. They dumped it down to the, and updated it down, so they actually took that section out, and that is part of the decrease in the amount.
Okay, another question I have is, let me find it here.
Okay, while you're thinking.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I have a question under the scope of work.
Okay.
Um, it actually says a contract number, and that contract number is not the same number as the top, that references a different number, and then it refers to Ni County.
You're correct. So, we can have them pick that. We can, I can call them and find out why.
Okay, so I think that was a little bit confusing. Especially, it says, I didn't know- Especially since I didn't know whether ours was the one seven seven eight nine, or whether
Do you guys get any of these services? Yeah. I know it's a requirement for us to do it, but I don't know that we're actually getting the services.
And then you said it was a less amount, but on, on page one, um, A, it says that there's an increase.
That was from the original contract, according to Lakin, that was the one that was approved back in July of twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
So this is just the amendment that's taking it from the six thousand to the five thousand, the monthly cost amount.
Gotcha.
And the-
And then, um, I have to find it here, where did it go? Somewhere in there, it says that we're supposed to be receiving updates. Have we ever received updates?
Not that I know of.
Yeah, exactly, if we have a contract, we need to make sure that we're requesting updates, I mean, because we're dealing with some important things, important things for our county, and I think we need to hear on a regular, you know, like what is deemed by the contract.
So if you guys want, you can table this, and, um, Lakin and I can reach out to them next week when she gets back, and we can ask them those questions and fit, have them fix the Nye language. Okay?
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll table it. Uh, we'll move into Item Nine. "For discussion on possible action to approve/disapprove the temporary road closure permit for the annual Fourth of Jul- July Parade hosted by the VFW, starting on Sonoma Street, turn left on Broad Street, turn left on Eighth Street, then turn right on Altenberg. The parade will end at Elquis Park. The parade will take place on Fourth of July, twenty twenty-three at ten a.m." I can't believe we're already doing this again.
I know, so I put this on there for Steve Burkhart, because he, um, I do, do it as a favor for the VFW. I don't know if I have the authority to be able to vote on it, since I'm putting it on there for him, but it's for them.
You can.
Okay, um, but yeah, that's-
You have to reap a benefit.
I just want to make sure I'm not stepping on anything, so.
You get to see the parade free.
So, yeah, right, so I'm, yeah, I'm putting it on Mr. Burkhart, putting it on for Mr. Burkhart, we have everything in line, have everything signed, other than you guys, all of us signing it, so.
Okay, if there's, is there any questions from the public? All right, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the temporary road closure permit for the annual Fourth of July parade hosted by the VFW, starting on the Sonoma Street, turn left on Broad Street, turn left on Eighth Street, then turn right on Altenberg. The parade will end at the Elquis Park, the parade will take place on July Fourth, twenty twenty-three at ten a.m.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And move into-
We'll read and speak.
Move into Item Ten, uh, "For discussion on possible action to approve/disapprove the Lander County Community Health Center to offer free sports physical for high school students residing in Lander County and free preschool screenings for preschool children residing in Lander County." And haven't, I thought, um-
This is something we did last year.
Yeah, exactly.
And so we're just asking for the approval of that again. Um, and Mrs. Stacy is here, she could probably speak to how successful that was last year, if, uh, if you guys would like to know, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Hey, please? Yeah, that's all right.
We, we love updates.
Yeah, just push the button for us, we can hear you. Thanks. Awesome.
And just state your name for the record.
It's Stacy Giesar.
All right.
All right, so, um, yeah, I guess they've been doing this for a few years, they've been offering prees-, um, sports physicals and preschool physicals. Um, and I believe the dates Brandy has that she wants to do if it gets approved is June twenty-sixth and twenty-eight, and July twenty-fifth in Battle Mountain, and July twenty-seven in Austin, because last year, I believe Commissioner Waits, um, brought it up, that she wants to go to, wants us to go to Austin, so.
Nice.
Yes. And we would like to, um, if approved, we'd like to advertise it before school's out.
Okay. Perfect.
I think the advertising is so, so important, we just don't get the word out, especially, to some of the rural areas out.
So I know, we've had some of that discussion, do we have a, like a social media page where we advertise, we do? Do we get, is there much, is there a way to track your traffic on it, to see?
Yes, and it's pretty active.
It is, great, okay.
Well, hopefully, we will have a new electronic sign by then in, uh, Austin, so we could even put it on that, which would be really cool, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the Lander County Community Health Center to offer free sports physicals for the high school students residing in Lander County and free preschool screenings for preschool, um, children residing in Lander County.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Eleven. "For discussion on possible action to approve/disapprove the interlocal contract between public agencies, a contract between the State of Nevada acting by and through its Secretary of State and Lander County." Molly, you have something to say on it?
Molly Gonzalez, for the record, this is just a contract that we do, um, I think the last one was a two-year contract, we have to do with the Secretary of the State, it's for the security of our, um, internet in our office. It has where, um, Homeland Security monitors all of our emails and all of our stuff going through our, through just our office.
So is this your phone number, forgive me, I don't know all the phone numbers, the phone number on the top, six three five five seven three eight?
That is our office number.
That's your number, okay, thank you.
Are there any questions, questions from the public? Or motions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the interlocal contract between public agencies. It's a contract between the State of Nevada acting by and through its Secretary of State and Lander County.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we'll move to, thank you, Molly. Uh, Item Twelve. "For discussion on possible action to approve/disapprove the one-year lease agreement between Lander County and the Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education, on behalf of Great Basin College, term will be from July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four."
It's our standard agreement with Great Basin for them to lease the building.
And, and why have they gone down to just one year? Did they give any reason?
They didn't.
I thought that was in-
I'm puzzled by that myself.
That isn't what it was before, yeah.
No, it was three years.
They're three years with ninety days.
Yeah. Okay, but you've, you've reviewed this, right, Council?
Yes.
You're okay with that? Okay.
It, the most important thing, it's got an early out provision, although I think it's ninety days instead of thirty, I could be wrong. But it does have an early out, um, provision, which is what I look for, yeah.
Okay, uh, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the one-year lease agreement between Lander County and the Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education, on behalf of the Great Basin College, term will be from July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into Correspondence Reports, Futures End items. Anybody have anything on this?
Everybody have anything to throw out there? Bert, you have anything?
Okay.